Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor, Skip Henderson. City manager, Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Toya Tucker, District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem, and District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney, Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the February 22nd City Council meeting. We do have Counselor Mimi Woodson who's attending virtually. She is unable to be here, but she will be participating in the votes, so it may be a little lag in trying to get all those accounted for. But we're glad you're here with us. We're going to begin this meeting as we begin all of our meetings, and that is by invoking God's presence. And I'd like to invite to the podium Rabbi Poland from Temple Israel here in Columbus. Rabbi, welcome.
We begin with a prayer of gratitude for all that is holy in our lives. God needs no words, no English or Hebrew, no semantics and no services, but we need them. Through prayer, we can sense our inner strength, our inner purpose, our inner joy, our capacity to love. As we reach upward in prayer, we sense these qualities in our Creator. To love God is to love each other, to work to make our lives better. To love God is to love the world God created and to work to perfect it. To love God is to love dreams of peace and joy that illuminate us all and to bring that vision to life. May this vision be always protected by the values of this great nation and this city council. Kenya He-Rotzen, may it be God's will. Amen.
Rabbi, thank you for your presence. Please thank Temple Israel for sharing you with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, if you would, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We normally give a little bit of an update on the COVID situation, and we actually have some positive news for the first time in a while. The trends continue downward. We're still close to 200 individuals on the number of cases per 100 people. 100 people per 1,000. I'm going to get it right in a minute. We're down. Let's leave it at that. And the main thing that we look at in most instances is the hospitalization rate, and right now, it's finally down below 100, so we're close to about 70. So thank you for what you're doing and trying to be cognizant of all of the things you guys have been aware of for the last three years, and we appreciate it because it's strictly due to the efforts of the citizens of this community that we have not had a more difficult time with COVID than we have, so we appreciate it. All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from February 8th. Motion by the Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
The second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Any edits? All right, all in favor. Bruce can queue it. Just all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. All right, we'll turn the mic over to our City Attorney for the City Attorney's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Got a fairly lengthy agenda here. Need some votes. First up is property for rezoning at 1104 Leslie Drive. It is ready for adoption.
Move approve.
Motion approved from Counselor Thomas, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, queue it, and please register your votes, counselors. All right, and is Counselor Woodson in favor of this item? All right, she is. All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. That passes.
All right. Next zoning matter for a vote is 7217 Warm Springs Road. This is going from general commercial to residential multifamily 2. It's...
All right, there's a motion approved from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Counselor Woodson? Counselor Woodson votes for. All right, that's approved.
That passes. Next item is the 2807 Bradley Circle Historic Columbus Petition. Mr. Krieg may be here, but that's ready for a vote.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Any discussion to the motion? Hearing none, please queue the vote. Is Counselor Woodson in favor? Register her in favor.
All right. Next item up is the ordinance enacting a districting plan. Oh, I'm sorry, let me go back, Mayor. Back one. 5339 Thomason Avenue going to neighborhood commercial with conditions. It's ready for action.
Motion approved from Counselor Garrett, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion? Hearing none, please queue it. Is Counselor Woodson in favor? All right, that's unanimous.
All right. Next item up is the districting plan for Columbus, Georgia council districts. The map has been approved by the State Reapportionment Office, and this is ready for adoption at this time.
Motion approved from the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second?
Aye.
All right, there's a second to the motion. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, I would request that the Elections Office make a presentation to us that we show to the community. With this redistricting plan, part of the old districts will be in effect from March to... And then the new districts, and it's a mess. And if she would please make a presentation to us about how all of this is going to work, it would be appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I will take care of that. Any further discussion? All right, please queue it. Counselors, register your votes.
All right.
Is Counselor Woodson in favor? Okay. And before we go into the first readings, we had a young lady who was supposed to be on my agenda and somehow got left off. Can we bring her up?
Sure, let me make one more comment. Again, the old council district maps will be used for the election in May, and then in the next election cycle, we'll go to the new maps. Just want to repeat that.
All right.
The school board, are there changes going on in that?
Yeah.
They'll have new maps in the May election cycle. School board.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think Ms. Ebony Simpson from the Georgia Department of Community Affairs was supposed to be on my agenda. Is she here today? Okay. She's going to, as a presentation, make and talk about Plan First.
If I can get two seconds to grab the...
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to keep this one? Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we left you off.
That's okay. I had a wonderful drive this evening from beautiful Savannah, Georgia, so thank you for accommodating me.
Oh, my, okay.
Good evening, Mayor Henderson, council members and citizens here that are here today. It is my honor to present your community with your Plan First Award and Plan First Certificate. The Plan First Program recognizes and rewards communities who have successfully and consistently implemented their comprehensive plan. And since 2016, Columbus has been doing just that. So the Plan First Program started in 2015, so Columbus is, they started in the second class of the Plan First Program. So y'all have been doing some great work, at least throughout the Plan First Program, for the last six years, and I look forward to working with you all through the next three years. Your staff has participated in the Plan First Review process. You all have nominated success stories that have been shared throughout the world, now that due to social media, as showing that projects that are great projects to implement, as well as, most recently, presented at DCA's Community Planning Institute. So we just thank you for your partnership with the Plan First Program. There are wonderful projects that you all have implemented, at least since I've been in this position, and I personally love trails, and so it is amazing to see your dragonfly trail network come to fruition as we've gone through this process. Some of the benefits that you all have is the statewide recognition, of course, access to a half percent interest rate reduction through the Jifa, Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. You also get basis point reductions through the Redevelopment Fund, the Downtown Development Loan Fund Program, and the Employment Incentive Program. And those programs are three of DCA's programs that deal with community development, economic development, and job creation. And then finally, you get free attendance at any of DCA's Community Planning Institutes, which happen twice a year. Shameless plug, the next one is coming up at Jekyll Island in May. And then finally, of course, with any program, there are expectations. And what we expect from Columbus is to continue to do what you all are doing, and that is to maintain your qualified local government status, to continue to successfully plan and implement your comprehensive plan, participate in the Plan First Program by nominating success stories annually, as well as participating in the plan review process. And finally, I would like to just thank you all once again for being a partner in the Plan First Program. The Plan First Program is successful because of communities like you. I could not do my job without you. So thank you, thank you, and thank you. And at this time, I would like to present you with the award and the certificate.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
So, here is the certificate, Mr. Mayor, and here is, uh-oh, your award. So thank you all so very much.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, despite the confusion we had, unfortunately, this is a big award for us. Again, she's already said to you tonight, this just gives us more recognition as being a planned community in the state and really in the southeast. It may not sound like much, but folks look for that when they're relocating to a community this size. They want to know the community is well planned out and well thought about, and we're trying to achieve that. This is just one goal we try to strive for. So thank you again for this award, for this recognition for us. We would certainly cherish it and make sure it's used and get a good way for this community. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And Ms. Simpson, thank you so much for making the trip to Columbus to present that. And will you head back to Savannah tonight?
Yes, sir.
That's a long round trip, isn't it?
Yes, but it was worth it.
It was for us. Thank you so much. Ms. City Attorney, I'll take it back over to you. Thank you.
Mayor, we've got a request to move up Item 9 on my agenda, the bond resolution and vote. If we could get the Finance Director called up. Ms. Alexander here. This shouldn't take too long. We do have some out-of-town guests, Bond Council, the Pennels from Savannah and others. Ms. Alexander, if you'll introduce everybody.
Sure will. Good evening. So today has been a very exciting day. We closed on the Columbus Building Authority bonds. It was approximately $50 million that we issued in bonds. We closed on that this morning, and less than an hour later, we sold our SPOS bonds. So it has been a very, very exciting day, kind of hectic day. That was approximately $130 million in principal that we issued in terms of those bonds, just over $150 million in proceeds. We had a 1.62 true interest cost. I won't steal the thunder from our presenter here tonight. So he'll talk more specifically about that and explain the details related to the sale, but I'd just like to thank our Bond Council that's here with us tonight. As Clifton mentioned, they're out of town. It's Gray, Pennell, and Woodard. And I'd also like to introduce, without further ado, our financial advisor here, Mr. Courtney Rogers, Senior Vice President of Davenport and Company.
Thank you, Angelica. Mayor, members of council, great to see you all, and great to see you in this building again since the last few times I think I've seen you downtown. If I could get the presentation, and there we go. Awesome. As Angelica said, it was an unusual day. I've been doing this almost 30 years now, and it's the first time I can remember actually closing an issue for the same issuer and selling more bonds the same day. But that's the way we had to do it because of some IRS rules, the way that taxes and bonds were. What I wanted to do, and I know some of you saw some of this before, but I wanted just to kind of go back through it again and just talk about the great ratings that Columbus enjoys. You have a AA2, AA+ , which, as you can see, is in the very strong category. We went through that process again for both issues a couple of months back, and some of the things that said, Moody's basically said the city's financial position is healthy with improved reserves and liquidity. I know that's something we've been working on ever since I've had the pleasure of working with you all, and you guys have done a great job bringing the liquidity side of your financial position up. Other things they talked about, of course, is your sizable tax base. You've got the military and healthcare presence that are behind you. You've got moderate fixed costs. And the challenges are, of course, we are using some economically sensitive sales tax revenues to repay these bonds, especially the ones we sold today. And then we've got some demographic issues that don't put us in as great a light as some of the others that are slightly higher than us. So those are some of the challenges we have. S&amp;P again said some of the similar things. Your financial position has been steadily strengthened over the past five years through positive operating revenues. I think that goes back to management, not only of your staff, but of yourself, as you went through and worked through some tough budgets over the last several years, and then getting through this COVID crisis. So as Angelica said, so this is the second part of the overall plan, and this is the SPOS bond. So as you all know, back in November, the citizens approved the $200 million. We're not going to issue all of it now, and the reason is that there's an IRS rule that says that you need to intend to spend all of it within a 36-month period in order to issue taxes and bonds. And because this is going to take a long process, we are not going to be able to spend it all, all $200 million, in the first 36 months. So we, as a team, came up with $150 million as the need for the first 36 months. We will come back at a later date, possibly in about three years, to do the final amount. And at that point, we should have a better sense of what the overall cost is going to be as well. So the project, of course, is the Judicial Center and Parking Deck. The CMB, the Building Authority Bonds, of course, was for the administration. This is all judicial that we're talking about today, roughly $200 million in project costs. We were very successful with 10 bidders, and I will say that in my experience, usually for $100 million plus of bonds, we might see six or seven bidders. We had 10 bidders today, and that is very strong. Shows you the quality of the bonds, that folks really wanted to buy these bonds. The other thing I'll point to is you look and see that our winner at Jeffersy's LLC came in at $155, but if you look at the other bids, you'll notice that they were very, very tight. They were very close together. Again, I think that speaks to the quality of the credit here, that there was very, very competitive bidding here. One basis point is 1100 of a percent, and you can see that basically the top eight were within five basis points. That, in my opinion, is very, very, very tight. So that is great. As Angelica mentioned, once we add in all of the cost of issuance, it comes in at $162, so under 2% for what is basically 10-year money. This is what the final results look like. Now, in our market, bonds are bid on coupon and yield. The coupon you can see is actually higher than the yield, which basically means that we're going to pay a little more in interest, but we don't have to issue as much in bonds to produce that $150. So you may have heard Angelica say roughly $130 million, and you're like, wait, we're borrowing $150, and that is correct. We're going to produce $150 million because the buyers are paying a premium for the bonds. In return, they get a higher interest payment during this period. So essentially, our bond issue is going to be $129.49, or roughly $129.5 million, and that will produce the $150 million. You can see on this chart, essentially, we got about $21 million of premium. We will basically be able to put $150 million in the bank and repay that over the next 10 years. You also notice that the first three years have higher debt service, and then it drops down. That's so that when we come back three years from now and issue the rest of the bonds, we'll be able to drop those in the final seven years. So essentially, with your approval tonight, we will move forward to a closing. We are looking to get that closed on March 10th, and at that point, all the funds will be in the bank for the administration building and taking care of that project, and then roughly three-quarters of the money will be in the bank for the judicial project. So, Mr. Mayor, happy to answer any questions, and as Angelica mentioned, the gentleman from Gray Pennell, John and Jim Pennell, are here today if there are any questions on the legal side.
Very good news. Any questions among council? Motion approved from Counselor Crabbe, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? If we could queue it, please register your votes. Counselor Woodson voting affirmatively? Okay. All right, that's unanimous in folks here. Courtney, thank you. Great job. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers, Jim, and John Pennell for all being here tonight. All right. Next item up, Mayor, we've got some zoning hearings to get through. The first one up is 6500 6516 Lynch Road. The Carthnik and Vine Trust petition recommended for approval with conditions by planning and regular approval by Planning Advisory Commission. Is the petitioner here on Lynch Road? All right. Just give them your name and address, sir, and briefly tell council what you're planning.
Yes, sir. My name is Harlan Price of Architecture Innovations Design Group. I am the Architect of Record. My home address is 241 Tagway in Fortune.
What's the proposed use?
We're proposing a convenience store and restaurant and some additional retail space. We haven't decided on what the third retail space is yet. I know one stipulation, originally thought we'd put a liquor store in there, but one stipulation, we understand, is no liquor store, and we're fine with that. So, but it will be a restaurant and convenience store and a third space that is undefined, retail space is undefined as yet.
All right, and there are...
And the grocery store will have gas pumps.
There are conditions in the ordinance, counselors, you should have those around the table. Seven conditions are in the ordinance, but if there are any other questions, now is the time to ask.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let council know that we had a neighborhood meeting, had a really good turnout, and Counselor House was there and his wife, Marilyn. We appreciate everybody turning out. We had a good discussion. One of the things that came out was they were interested in this being a neighborhood-friendly environment. And with that in mind, Counselor House and I propose to add conditions number six and seven. Six talks about basically no 18-wheeler-type parking allowed on this site. We're all experienced or have seen the intersection of Macon Road and Highway 80 right there at the Chevron Station where multiple 18-wheeler trucks and trailers are parked, and we were concerned that this may turn into that, and so we've got this condition in there so it is not allowed on this site. This condition number seven is relating to alcohol sales, and the neighbors, again, wanted to have a business-friendly neighborhood environment, and so we thought that it would be good to eliminate any alcohol on-premise sales except for a restaurant with an alcohol license and a convenience store that would offer beer and wine. So with that in mind, counsel, I would offer to add the amendments in and make a motion if they be added in.
All right, there's a motion to add those amendments.
All right. Conditions number six and seven will be added if this passes.
Okay. And there was a second from Counselor House? Two. I didn't hear you.
Just to clarify, I've spoken with the proponents of this rezoning, and they're in agreement as well.
Yes, we're in agreement.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to add Amendment six and seven. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Counselor Woodson voting affirmative? Okay. All right, they're added.
Okay, those are added now. Any other questions around the table, and we'll see who's in the audience that wants to be heard. All right. Is anybody else in the audience that wants to be heard on the zoning petition at 6516 Lynch Road? If so, raise your hand. Don't see anybody. We'll bring that back in two weeks for a vote at the nine o'clock meeting, the nine in the morning.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item up is zoning at 877 Far Road. I think Counselor Huff may have some comments on this matter.
Counselor Huff?
Yes. Thank you. The citizens and I, along with the owner of the property, Mr. Dees, met on February 4th, and we had a good meeting, had a nice turnout, and there were a lot of things mentioned that morning, which I'm sure some of the ones here will mention when they come up. But we had spoken about a mixed-income development area there with apartment living, single-family homes, police annex, senior daycare, and things of this nature. So due to higher crime coming into the area with any type of general commercial at this point in time, the constituents were asking that we get a letter from Mr. Dees stating that these things would take place. So at this point in time, we have not received, I spoke with Mr. Dees, we hadn't received a letter, and the constituents, I'm sure by now you all have either received a phone call, a letter, or something, and letting you know how they feel. So the constituents at this point want it to remain residential multifamily and not move to general commercial. So they'll be here tonight to speak on that and to let council know as far as the support that I will need going forward. We just heard Counselor Allen talk about neighborhood-friendly and things of that nature, and these are the same things, the same issues that they have spoken to me with about for the last couple of weeks now. So we'll move on, and it'll be open for discussion, and I'll come back in at the end.
All right, sir. Mr. Dees, come on up. It's your application. Go ahead and give them your name and address and any comments you want to make.
Tim Dees, I live in Jacksonville, Florida, 2600 River Place Lane. I came up and met with Mr. Renfro, reference rezoning this property after owning it for 40 years. I was very impressed with that area when I came up and looked at my property, at the changes that had been made. I had no idea what this was going to entail. He was absolutely marvelous in helping me walk through this. When I met Mr. Huff, he took it over and folded in his constituents, of which I learned more from than anyone else. more from than anyone else. I have had the pleasure of meeting with them approximately four times by either phone or personal meeting. What I found out is what they do not want on that four acres. They don't want what they've got at the intersection of Beunivista Road or St. Mary's Road, and quite honestly, I don't blame them. I cannot disagree with anything they brought up at their meeting. Should it be voted down, that is up to you. That's why you were elected to your position. I have no control over that. However, what I would like to point out is in being guided through what it would take to bring it this far, I had to have a plat done by an engineering firm. We made the mistake that opened this can of worms by looking for a name to put on the anchor, because we knew we didn't. It's too big a piece of property and way too expensive for a gas station mini-mart. The mistake was in the word grocery store. That should have never gone in there. The entire focus now, after my meeting, and the reason, Councilman Huff, which I would apologize, but I won't, because I knew a letter from me was of no avail. This is what it was going to take. I called an agent who deals in nothing but commercial development in situations like this. I have two apartment complexes, one on each side. We looked at what that area does not have. It does not have a urgent care center. It does not have a medical care facility to take care of someone after they had an urgent care. A senior transportation center, an ambulance center, on and on and on. In the meeting, I heard fifty different ideas and fifty different arguments about, no, we don't want that either. So as far as agreeing on something to put in a letter, there's no way to do it. It's like trying to herd ducks. There's no way that I could write a letter and say, okay, we're gonna put all fifty of these things on four acres. I am, if it is approved, I am going after pure medical, medical tied businesses or businesses that are appropriate for that area, and in no way do I intend to sell this to anyone who would have some businesses like the end of Beunivista Road or Far Road. Property's too expensive and it's too big. Four acres is a lot of dirt. They can put a lot of stuff on there. These medical care units are all over this town, except guess where? So when this lady did her survey, and she looked at care to get an ambulance to that area, a service facility that would provide transportation to seniors, an urgent care center, there were none. You go right around Armour Road, two miles from St. Francis Hospital, you got four urgent care centers. How many you got out there around Beunivista, Far Road, and St. Mary's? Hell, I grew up out there. None. That's why I want it commercial. I don't want it commercial for any other reason. I've owned it for forty years. I wanna thank you for putting up with me, and this box of worms I opened. And Councilman Huff, I can't thank you enough for your patience and tolerance, sir.
I appreciate you, Mr. Dees, for being here. A follow-up before we move on. The requested letter asked for miss, mixed-income development housing, uh, area with medical. And if, from my conversation with the group, if the letter had come back, just a letter stating that you were interested in the medical piece, the housing piece for seniors, the daycare center, things of that nature, then the constituents were more able, ready to, eh, really able to sit down and talk about it. But the fact that they didn't get the letter, and they didn't hear anything else about the medical piece until now, that's what they're upset about, because they say that it needed to have something in writing, was what we talked about when we left the meeting. So they were calling me, asking for the letter, and I didn't receive it, and the planning department didn't receive it. So that's how we got to this point.
When I left that meeting, I had all intentions of sending a letter about something. However, I had no idea what, of all those ideas, I could shake through that sifter and keep everybody happy with. I mean, this is an impossibility from like my side. So I called a commercial real estate expert that deals in these situations and said, what do I do? The first thing they did was ran the analysis I told you about. And when I saw the numbers on available transportation, medical care centers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, it is so ripe financially for me that two days ago, when I finally got this full answer back from this agent, I was already here. So my letter is being written as I stand here, Councilman. I'm sorry, but that's the best I could do.
Well, for the people who live in the area, they, you're getting ready to hear from them. Ms. Parker, I think, is going first.
Okay, give them your name and address, Ms. Parker, for the record, and then we'll let everybody have their say.
Good evening, everyone. We are here again, the residents and citizens of District Three. We are here in opposition of the four-acre property on Far Road to be rezoned as commercial use. It's no secret that this area has been attacked with criminal activities. This is a high-traffic, two-lane street, not highway, a street. We, the concerned citizens of District Three, are concerned, and we are afraid, about having anything on this property other than residential. I'll tell you why. Because it may cause an increase of the same issues that we are having today, criminal activities, and other undesirable activities I may not mention. Our hope and prayer is that this council look at and understand our very heartfelt concerns and not support commercial rezoning on this property. Yes, Mr. Dees did not comply with the letter. We complied with the letter, and I think every council here has that letter, and I also emailed it to four other, uh, people who were concerned. So I thank you for letting us speak this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. Anybody else?
Good evening. My name is Olive Adal Kendall, and I live at forty-five oh-two Moline Avenue. Many of you spoke with me yesterday evening. If you, I didn't get a chance to speak with you, I left you a voice message asking you to not support this commercial rezoning. I'm also standing this evening to represent ba- twelve families where the occupants are eighty-five years old and older and could not come out this evening, but also want to be heard that they don't want this rezoned commercial. Based on what Ms. Parker has already said, you're aware of what has transpired in our neighborhood. Our constituents in that neighborhood and surrounding, Washington Heights and all of the others, are fearful of what will happen to our homes and to our neighborhood. We want a neighborhood that will be viable and that will encourage young families to wanna move into this area, and also to protect those of us who are already living in this particular area. My parents built their home in nineteen sixty-three in Cedar Hills, and now I live in that particular property. I have come to Columbus and have just been amazed, since I've lived at many places across the country, at the ordinance, ordinances that are not strong enough to protect us in many ways in the neighborhood, parked cars, uh, abandoned homes that have not been, uh, razed, a variety of different concerns that we have. So I also, I don't drive anymore, but I do get someone every now and then to take me to other parts of town, and I have not seen the convenience stores and all of the other, um, things that we see in our neighborhood on other sides of this town. We need to become one Columbus, where no matter if you live on the east side, the north side, that you're as concerned about all of the neighborhoods as you are about the neighborhood that you live in. So hopefully, you will stand with us as we support this. Yes, Mr. Dees, we had an awesome meeting with you, uh, and we've talked with you, but since you did not do what you said you were going to do, then we had no idea of the other interests that you had spoken to. As a former contractor for many years when I lived in Ohio, I also know that when you sell property to someone, you can't necessarily guarantee that they will put exactly what you have asked them to put on that particular property once they own it. You said that you're not going to sell it, and we've also talked to you, you've also said that financially, and we understand that, that you're a business person and you're about, uh, making money on anything that you own. But we still would like for you to please, please stand with us, the representatives here, and those persons who have put their blood, sweat, and tears into ownership of property in that neighborhood. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Councilman. Um, I would just stand with saying, thank you, that I will ask you to look at or think yourself, if you were in a position as us, and you lived in an area that's surrounded by nice neighborhoods and one that is starting to, uh, have a lot of crime, our safety is at risk, and our primary concern is, Mr. Dees said that we had a lot of discussion, we did, and there were things that we proposed to him. We did not get a guarantee. And I am standing here saying, if we have no guarantee that, uh, with him following through with what he told us he was going to do from that meeting, then how do we know that the things that he proposes, that he's going to put on that property, will end up being, um, because he can change, and he has the right to change? So I stand, as the others have said, that we would like to have the property remain residential. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Would you state your name, ma'am, and your address? I apologize. For the record.
I'm Mary J. Quiller, forty-two thirty-three Ridgefield Drive, Columbus, Georgia.
I don't think I said my name. I'm Linda Parker. I live at forty-two oh-eight Ridgefield Drive, Sire.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wanna make a comment? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
If I could make just one more comment, um, as they, actually, Ms. Parker and the group, this will come back next, in two weeks for the final vote for the council to take. So we are urging counsel to deny at this point and keep it residential multifamily. Thank you.
All right, we will bring that back then in two weeks for a vote. As requested, it's for general commercial. It'll be up to council to vote that up or down. All right. Mayor, the next item we had up was Counselor Barnes' proposal to add some enforcement for un, unkept, unmaintained swimming pools. Uh, it's on first reading. I know that the counselor's not here. Do y'all wanna, uh, leave it on first reading? Or continue it on first reading for two weeks?
Motion to continue it, yep.
Okay.
Hang a second.
He can comment next time, but we'll bring that back on first reading.
Do we need to vote on that, or is that, you're just gonna do it administratively? There's a motion, a second, to continue it. Do we need to vote on that?
No, sir. We'll bring it back. We know he's absent. We've handled item nine. Item ten, is Judge McBride here? I'm not sure, in the crowd, if he made it. Anyway, this is a request from Chief Judge Gil McBride. This would designate an additional temporary alternative location for Superior Court, jury proceedings, et cetera, twenty-one hundred Comer Avenue. It's ready for adoption.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? There's a, Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Attorney, is this, does this move all of this activity out of the Ice Rink and the Civic Center?
It will. I think the timetable is still March. Is that right, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct.
But all of that stuff that is currently being handled, uh, in the Ice Rink and the Civic Center will go to this Comer Avenue address?
That's great.
Thank you.
All right, and this will run through the end of the year, this formal resolution, but it's ready for a vote.
We need a vote. Uh, it's been motioned and seconded by Counselor Crabbe and by Mayor Pro Tem. No other discussion. Please cue it. Page D votes. Counselor Woodson in favor? It's unanimous.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you move on, if, um, I'd like to ask for special consideration in bringing up, uh, an item on my agenda, Judge, um, Stephen Smith, Magistrate Court Judge, for a brief update. It's about a request of four thousand dollars. Uh, don't think it would take but a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Which item, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, it's a update, uh, on my agenda, magistrate court update, uh, Judge Smith.
Thank you so much for, um, for letting me. I'm a little embarrassed that I'm getting in front of these folks, but I'll be brief, which is a dangerous thing to be, uh, said by a lawyer, but, um, sure, sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry, there's a delay back there on the TV, so I really do apologize. But the judge is here pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, which says that any department or elected office must come before this council and ask for additional appropriations before exceeding the budget. Um, the reason for the judge's request tonight is, um, relative to his, uh, part-time associate judge. Um, the part-time associate judge has been with the city for several years. As you may recall, um, the judicial circuit for Chattahoochee, uh, the Chattahoochee Judicial Circuit received a grant from the state, um, using ARP funds to, um, address the court backlogs. Uh, there were several positions that were included in that grant. Um, some of those positions included additional part-time magistrate, uh, judges. Um, the issue here is, um, the positions that were approved in the grant, um, they were approved for a higher salary than the current part-time, um, judge that we have. And so the judge is here tonight requesting additional appropriations of about four thousand dollars. Um, I don't see that as being issued, uh, with us being able to provide coverage for that amount. Should counsel so, uh, choose to approve the additional appropriations, but that would allow us, um, allow the judge to compensate his current part-time magistrate judge at the same rate as those part-time, um, judges that are coming on board as part of the judicial ARP grant to address the court backlog. So, judge.
And so, uh, Mayor and counsel, I, I do ask that you approve the four thousand dollar request.
Motion approved and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Counsel Woodson in favor? It's unanimous, Judge. You can still make a statement if you like to, but you got your money.
Listen, I know when to shut up. And, and I don't know if Angelica has passed the bar, but I'm going to hire her as my lawyer if she has. Thank y'all so very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Mayor, only that concludes our formal business agenda. We would make a request for an executive session concerning personnel and litigation.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the public agenda. First is Mr. Ralph Dow, representing the Fraternal Order of Police regarding public safety perspective of FOP membership. Lieutenant, if you would, just give your, your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. We'll start the timer after you announce your name and your address so that you'll get the full five minutes. And then if you don't-
That's about where I'm going to hit, is about five minutes, so I appreciate that.
And if you don't, if you, whatever reason, you don't complete it, you're welcome, stick around, you have another three minutes at the end.
Yes, sir. My name is Ralph Dow. I live at 8470 Liberty Hall Drive. Thank you for your time this evening. Let me address upfront why I'm here. It's not for personal reasons, as I am told may be the perception of some here tonight. In fact, I'd rather be anywhere but here delivering any message but the one I have. But the truth is, our community and our department are in a crisis, and I am here at the request of the majority representation of the CPD, who are also members of the FOP, to be their voice. I would humbly ask you to open your hearts and minds to our message tonight. We come with a deep desire that you will partner with us to address the dangerous crime crisis in our community and help us rebuild our department, which has the lowest morale many of us have experienced in decades of service. We want to be part of the solution, and we want to build a department where officers are proud to work and where we can attract and retain the best and brightest. Our citizens deserve this level of service, and we all want a safer community. In 2021, the police department lost 95 officers, 87 resigned, and eight retired. That's nearly two per week. In the first seven weeks of 2022, we lost 16 officers and have three pending resignations. If this trend continues, we will lose about 120 officers this year. A 10% turnover rate is normal, and the current climate nationally, turnover has increased by 18%. Our resignation rate increased by 112% in '21 over '20. Officers are leaving departments across the country, somewhat driven by the negative attitudes toward law enforcement over the past two years, but our rate of deterioration and departure is exponentially higher, as you can see. But to be clear, many of our officers are not leaving law enforcement, they are going to other agencies. If we stop the losses today, we can only train about 50 officers per year. Therefore, best case, we are three years from rebuilding this department. Crime spiraled out of control in '21. Murders increased 50%, aggravated assaults rose by 81%, traffic fatalities were up 57%. According to their published annual report, the city of Atlanta only experienced a 1% increase in murders and a 9% increase in aggravated assaults. To our members, these are not statistics, they are real people and represent real grieving families. We are working in a deteriorating department with the lowest morale many of us have seen in decades. The demise of our department is dangerously outpacing our ability to recruit, restaff, and train new officers, and we are losing our experienced public servants. We are tired from working extended shifts, discouraged from watching officers leave on an accelerating basis, upset from watching good people being robbed, shot, and killed on our streets. The executive board of the FOP conducted a survey of our CPD membership, 232 officers, which is 73% of the CPD. All but 13 responded. Therefore, the poll represents nearly 95% of the CPD officers in our FOP lodge. These officers represent tens of thousands of hours of professional law enforcement training and hundreds of years of police experience in selfless service to our city. We posed the following questions to our members, and I will share their reply. Do you believe the CPD is presently staffed with enough officers to provide the citizens with the level of service they deserve? 99% answered no. Do you feel there are enough officers on the street at any given time to provide adequate backup to ensure officer safety? 99% answered no. Do you think issuing principal summons and the jail releasing suspects on OR bonds have contributed to the increase in crime? 95.8% answered yes. Under the current leadership, do you think the police department has become more reactive than proactive? 95.8% answered yes. If yes, do you think this has contributed to the increase in crime? 94.7% responded yes. Do you think there's good communication between the chief's office and the rest of the department? 93% answered no. Do you have confidence in Chief Blackman to lead the Columbus Police Department in a manner that provides for fair treatment of officers, officer safety, and reduce crime in the city? Only 5% answered yes. 8.3% answered undecided, 2.3 declined to answer the question, and 84% answered no. That last data point is significant, and we do not take lightly its meaning, the message it sends, and the responsibility it places on this body to address. You must take action now. If these perspectives of officers who are living this every single day are not enough to compel you to take immediate action, I encourage you to watch the interviews on local news outlets. Last week, a lady told a reporter she takes a bat with her as she walks because she feels she must be armed to protect herself because the police aren't present. I strongly encourage you to request the daily lineups for the department. Look at the historically low numbers of officers patrolling our streets. The public deserves more than a skeleton crew of police officers who can only run from call to call. Our community deserves a department with enough officers to actively patrol, to prevent crime, to meet with our citizens, and to once again engage members of our community. A true number of vacancies, our true number of vacancies today is 174, based on the 488 model. Last week, I was asked to address the Public Safety Advisory Commission. One of the members made a statement. I thought we were headed toward a crisis, but we are already there, and we could not agree more.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You know, listen, we want to welcome all the members of the FOP here, and I know that I have, I have responded every time the FOP has invited me to come talk to them, and I've even reached out on occasion to go, to go meet with them. I've even met with smaller groups within the FOP, and I think what, what concerns me with this is, as a matter of fact, when the information that you dropped off to me with the sergeant bringing to me, he and I sat there and we walked through it. I didn't look at it yet, but he was walking me through it, and I, we remarked that there's some, some things in there that, that the FOP was concerned about that we, we think we can address together by working on some of the packages and benefits and pay and just some of the other things that we can get, get to work on. But I assumed that I'd have an opportunity to take a look at that information, as we've done in the past, and then get together in the next week. Then, of course, if I don't do anything with it, then I think the next step is to come on up here. Ms. Dow, you, you can't, you can't respond, so you can come up after the clerk's order. But, so it was really disappointing to me that this, the way this process is played out. And I, and you can count me among those who is skeptical with the way this has been reported without coming back and allowing us an opportunity to go through it. I, I do think it puts the, the desired result in question. You know, to me, it doesn't seem like you're looking for answers. It looks like you had already formed the answers and, and were discrediting somebody that you have a personal legal claim against. And that's, and that's, that's the way it looked to me, because I was just disappointed that the process wasn't followed to where we had an opportunity to discuss it. I also looked at some of the, some of the items in the, in the book, and, and I think some of them are, I mean, like the Atlanta, you're exactly right, they went up 1% in '21. They went up 64% in '20, so there really wasn't much room for them to go, and it doesn't, it doesn't excuse our being where we are. And, and we are, we are incredibly grateful for the hardworking men and women of our police department, and that what they've been doing over the last couple of years is heroic. With the diminished numbers and the things that they've had to do, it's been incredible. And this council has always tried to show their support by providing any resource that they possibly can to try to make sure that the officers are as safe as they can be and give them the tools they need to be successful. Again, I think that the biggest challenge for me is just the process, the way it was followed. I do think that there are some things that we can do to try to impact morale and try to do some things with regards to the packages and trying to make it more attractive and more competitive so that we can, we can hang on to the people we've, we've got and also try to bring in new people. But you're exactly right. The recruitment piece across the country is pitiful. I mean, it doesn't matter how much they're paying, we're just, we're not seeing people able to hire police officers. I can tell you that this council is interested in working with the hardworking men of the Columbus Police Department, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, all of our public safety, to try to find a way to provide the resources necessary to, to try to make sure that the folks in Columbus are safe. We know how hard the police are working, and council is working hard to try to make sure they, they provide those resources. But I, I am extremely disappointed in the way the, the process played out, and we didn't get an opportunity to have this discussion before you came to council. So. Mr. Hughley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I must say that I am disappointed in what my eyes see here tonight and what my ears have heard. A few months ago, the Street Committee, if you will, had in the streets a story about a disgruntled police officer who was out to get Chief Freddie Blackman. The story had to do with someone not getting promoted, and people were approaching me. And that person, the Street Committee said, had vowed to run for president of the FOP and would convince members of the FOP to do a vote of no confidence on Chief Freddie Blackman. According to, according to the Street Committee, this person had a plan, and I would ask that the deputy sheriff help keep peace in the room. But according to the Street Committee, this person had a plan. And then on or about January 20th, yes, the Courier-Echo Latino newspaper ran a story with a list of questions that were being asked of Columbus police officers in the FOP. This Echo Latino news story was recanting the same story I had been hearing from the Street Committee. Tonight confirms what I'd heard through the Street Committee and what was recanted in the Echo Latino newspaper. And so the disturbing thing is that the Street Committee's account in Echo Latino newspaper stories have unfolded tonight, just as the story months ago that I was hearing, and I find it amazing. And so I say again, I'm disappointed in what my eyes see here tonight and what my ears have heard from the leader of the FOP tonight. And so here is what I want to say to Chief Freddie Blackman tonight. Chief Blackman, I see you here, and, and I want you to know that I stand with you. I support you and the incredible job the men and women of the Columbus Police Department are doing under your leadership in this unprecedented time. You know, I've been with the city of Columbus 37 years, 17 as city manager. I have never witnessed such treatment of a police chief in my 37 years. Never have I seen a police chief disrespected in the way that Chief Freddie Blackman has been disrespected here tonight. Chief Freddie Blackman started his career in patrol. He worked his way through all of the ranks, patrol officer, detective, sergeant, lieutenant, captain, major, Federal Bureau of Investigation National Academy graduate, and he is FBI Basic Crisis Negotiator trained, a State of Georgia Post-Certified General Instructor. He was on the original game task force, the original tactical squad, the jump-out boys, if you will. Patrol Sergeant Vice Squad, Juvenile Diversion Unit Sergeant, First Offender Program for juveniles, Training Division Sergeant, Patrol Lieutenant, robbery, homicide, Training Division Lieutenant, Director of Training, Mobile Field Force Commander, Crisis Negotiator, Personnel Director, Captain, Office of Professional Standards, Major. He's educated, Bachelor of Science Criminal Justice, Master of Science Human Resource Management, 36 years with Columbus Police Department. He is smart. He does things by the book. Chief Freddie Blackman is qualified, if not more qualified, than any of the past police chiefs in Columbus, Georgia, that I've had the opportunity to encounter or work with in my 37 years of employment. So Chief Freddie Blackman, as you're here tonight, I want you to know that I stand with you and I support you. And as city manager of Columbus, you have my highest level of confidence and my highest level of support. As long as I'm city manager, all of my team members will support you and your team as you deal with violent crime and the shortage of personnel in this unprecedented time in our city. Chief Blackman, I want the record to reflect, that's why I'm speaking, that I stand with you and I support you tonight and going forward. In fact, you know, as I thought about it, I asked my staff, mayor and council, this is Black History Month, Black History Month, and this is what we get. So I want to conclude my remarks by sharing a few Columbus, Georgia, Black History moments in public safety that could have been shared tonight by the FOP leader. And so if you've got the PowerPoint, I just want to show you a few things. Won't take but a second. The next one, these are Columbus' first African-American policemen. There are four of them in this photo. And the one that I knew personally was Hickey White. Hickey White. Some of you out there know, knew Hickey White. The next slide. These were police officers, and of course, they could only arrest black folk. And they worked certain areas, and before they could arrest a white person, they had to call a white police officer. It's all in the, in the, in the news article up there. But they tore the flag off their uniform, and people got fired, and it was just a whole lot of crazy. In fact, as I Googled today, there was a story about this in the New York Times back then. Next slide. But A.J. McClung was the first African-American on the Public Safety Commission. Next slide. Here's your first black police chief in 1994. Next. Here's Freddie Blackman as your second African-American police chief. 36 years of service. Next slide. There's Joyce Dent Fitzpatrick. She was here tonight. First African-American deputy chief, female, black deputy chief. Next. Here's our first African-American sheriff. We just got him in '22. Next slide. Here's the first chief deputy African-American, John Fitzpatrick. Next slide. There's Billway Ray Weary, the first marshal in Muskogee County. Next slide. Gary Moore, chief deputy. Next slide. Larry Parker, the current chief deputy. Next slide. These are a few people that I'd like to take as a Black History moment to say, thank you, these public safety- you, these public safety officials, for your service in the Columbus, Georgia. And, and Mayor, you know, I know we're talking about vacancies, but Rita Hollowell is here. We got vacancies all over this government, they're all over, anywhere you go in Columbus in the private sector, they're all over Georgia, and, and I just want her to share our vacancies here. I heard a number of 174 officers provided by the FOP president. Well, she's got the facts, the numbers that she's going to show you.
We, we only have, we have one other person on, on the public agenda, I don't know if Ms. Alamin is here.
I don't see her.
Okay.
But this is just a vacancy.
No, that's fine, I just didn't want to make somebody wait. Counselor Thomas?
This is very difficult for me to do, but I would like to propose that this conversation be ended right now, and that if there are issues that we need to take up with the FOP or with the police chief or with the sheriff, that we do that and then come back into this council for approval. I believe that the conversation that we are having right now in response to the FOP president is wrong.
Well.
It should not, the content, the content may be right, but the conversation should not be happening as part of the public agenda. That's not what the public agenda is for.
Well, Ms. Mayor, I don't mind waiting to give, these are, this is not about FOP, it's about the vacancy rate.
That's a, that's a.
And we can wait for later.
If the FOP president had not been here tonight, would you have had?
And I would much rather he had not been here.
Yeah. All right, let's, I tell you what we'll do, we'll put, let's go back and put this back on the city manager's agenda for right now.
We can do it.
Because that, that was, to my understanding, that was not in response to anybody's appearance, that was in response to some of the service issues we're having in, in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I've said what I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Teresa Alamin, I'll call her one more time. She is not present, so we'll move into the city manager's agenda.
So, Ms. Mayor.
Let's, let's wait just a minute, let, let it clear out a little bit. You have to be, you have to register on Friday to be on. Sorry, Jerome. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, it's at the end of the, of course. I think they're, I think. We still have a little bit of business to do tonight.
Mr. Mayor, first on my agenda. First on my agenda, Ms. Mayor, I've got approval requested for holiday schedule.
Motion approved from Counselor Davis, second from Mayor Pro Tem on the holiday schedule. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it. You can register your votes. Counselor Woodson voted affirmative? She does. All right, there's a motion for Counselor Davis to approve item two on the city manager's agenda, and a second by Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it, and you can enter your votes once it comes on the screen. There we go. Ms. City Manager, if you would, mention the difference in the holiday schedule and run through number two as well.
Yeah, the difference in the holiday schedule is that we recommend that Friday, December 23rd, 2022, be designated as the floating holiday, and that's the only change, only difference. And on number two, the 2021 State of Georgia Department of Community Affairs CDBGCV award for Feeding the Valley, you know, they applied, we applied for a $3.1 million grant to, for facility expansion at Feeding the Valley on Flat Rock Road, and that's what this is about on number two. Number three is a donation request for the 2022 Columbus Civic Center Unity Week and Juneteenth Jubilee. It's the inaugural celebration of Juneteenth, and we ask your approval for donation requests.
Motion approved, Counselor Krabs, second from Counselor Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cue it and register your votes.
Mayor approved for the grants and donations.
All right, there's a motion from Counselor Davis to approve items four, five, six, seven, and eight, second from Counselor Tucker. Any, any one of these, anybody want pulled? Any questions? I guess we can do them all and cue it, can't we? Can't? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Counselor Woodson, affirmative. Okay. Would you walk through those, Mr.?
Yes, number four, Juvenile Drug Court Accountability Court State Grant, 100, up to $100,000 or as awarded. Number five is a Family Drug Court Accountability Court State Grant Request. It's up to $50,000. Number six, Adult Drug Felony Court Grant, it's $298,441 with a 12% cash match. Number seven, bleacher donation from Brookstone School, they're donating five sets of metal bleachers to parts and wreck to use where needed on ball fields. Number eight, Georgia Child Care and Parent Services, $6,308, and this supports early education goals by assisting families who are considered low-income with the cost of childcare. Number nine is a street acceptance, Logan Way and Lime Drive.
Motion approved by the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, you can cue it. That's approved. All right, there's a motion from Counselor Krabs, second from Counselor House on item 10 to approve it. Any discussion on that item? Hearing none, you can cue that as well. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we're approved. Okay.
And number 10, Mayor, is a Veterans Treatment Court Grant, it's $132,000.
I think that's the one they just approved, wasn't it?
Yes.
Oh, you're just telling what, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
$132,769, and I've got purchases. Mayor, we've got a lot of work going on, you heard from our attorneys, bond attorneys, and our financial advisor, you heard them say that they closed on deal today with an interest rate of 1.62%, unprecedented, but these are amendments, amendment three for space planning and programming and design.
Motion for Counselor House to approve A through G, second from Counselor Tucker. Any, anybody want any one of these pulled? All right, all in favor, say aye. Or if it's queued, please enter your votes, I'm sorry. Counselor Woodson votes affirmative.
And so, A was, was SLAM Collaborative, they've been working with us, they've met with us and doing a lot of work for us. B is amendment one for construction manager as general contractor services, and this is with Gilbane Building Company. C, amendment two for construction manager as general contractor services with Gilbane. D is fencing materials on an as-needed basis. E is amendment one, consolidated plan, neighborhood revitalization strategy area plan. F is data switches and access points for the Sanovas Building and Comer Avenue Building. And G is software license renewal for EV OQ content software. Those are the purchases, and I do have just a couple of more updates. I've got the Solicitor General here, and Finance Director will come and talk about why they are here, and then she will do the finance update after we hear from the Solicitor General.
Hello again. So, as the city manager mentioned, the Solicitor General is here pursuant to ordinance 13-39, which says that when a department or elected office is anticipated to need additional budget appropriations, they have to come before this council and make that request. The Solicitor General's Victim Witness Program is duly funded. It's partially funded by revenues that we receive in the general fund, it's also known as the 5% fund. This is money that are, that's tacked on to certain fines that impact, that have, that has a victim. That allocation in terms of that funding is split between the District Attorney's Office and the Solicitor General's Office, the District Attorney receiving the lion's share of that allocation at 70%. So duly funded, partially by revenues that we receive in the general fund, but then also, they apply and receive a grant, it's a victim witness, victim grant that they receive from the state every year, and so that covers a lot of the operating costs that they have for the program. Unfortunately, due to COVID and due to the backlog in the courts, you know, the, the fines, they have not, we have not really fully recovered in terms of the revenue that we receive from fines and forfeitures. So the Victim Witness Program is in need of additional general fund support. On an annual basis, it receives the program between the District Attorney's Office and the Solicitor General's Office, receive about $63,000 in base revenue as support from the general fund, in addition to any revenues that we collect from these fines. But again, due to COVID, those revenues have been down, and it has impacted the funding that the Solicitor's Office typically receives for the Victim Witness Program. So, the request that is before you tonight for the Solicitor's Office is about $128,000 that's needed in terms of support to continue providing the services that they are mandated to provide by state law. When you have a victim, you, you are mandated, we're mandated to provide cer, certain services to those victims, and the Solicitor's Office provides those services for our state court. So the Solicitor's Office is here, if there's any additional questions that you have concerning the request, but tonight it would be an additional 128, approximately 128,000 that they need in funding. I, I anticipate, you know, obviously the funding source at this particular time would be reserves, but, you know, as I give the finance update, tonight I'll speak more towards the finances as, as far as the city. I don't feel as if it's something that couldn't be covered, but I know it's a, it's a big dollar amount compared to the first request, so.
Any questions of the Finance Director or the Solicitor? Is there a motion? Well, hang on, Counselor Davis.
Would this be a material change in the budget?
Material change in the budget, I would say.
Would it be an increase in the budget?
It would be an increase in the funds that's allocated to the Solicitor's Office for their program, no change, no real material change in terms of the budget.
We still would anticipate at the end of the year, the bottom line would not, for the overall city budget.
Yes, bottom line for the overall city budget, in all likelihood, would cover this request. If not, we do have some reserves, some of those cares act reserves remaining that could cover this as well. One thing I'd also like to mention is, you know, the judicial ARP grant that came before you all, that was approved, did not include the state court. The state intentionally, intentionally left out funding for state court and those state court-related offices because each municipality received, received their own ARP funds.
Ms. City Attorney, would this be, would this qualify under budgetary ordinance requirements of where it would need the approval of city manager or the mayor as an emergency funding request?
Well, not as an emergency, I don't believe, it's, it's.
Recommendation of, of the need, I'm just.
I mean, the, the recommendation.
Blaming some language out of the, one of the line items in the requirements.
The recommendation has to be made by the city manager or the mayor under your ordinances, so that's what.
Or the finance director.
That's what they're here doing, or the finance director.
That's my question.
But, I mean, that's appropriate.
Yes.
Yes, I, I do recommend that we.
That's what I wanted.
Look, again.
No, I'm fine, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, yeah, but I was going to say, we just operate in unprecedented times, and, you know, we, we just got to figure it all out.
No, I'm just, it's just a policy, a procedure of a policy, that's all.
Motion approved, Counselor House, second from Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that's approved. Oh, Counselor Tucker?
I, I did have a question in reference to the ARP funds when you made that statement that the state did not include it, but we could possibly include it. I was just pulling out my handy dandy guy that I got from the NACO conference, so I, I don't know if that was something that you all wanted to do, but I'm always looking at using grant funds whenever we can.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. So, the next update is also mine. It is the monthly finance update, you should have the budget snapshot before you. So, starting to the right of the snapshot at the top, the general fund is down 0.14% when comparing January 2022 to January 2021. Keep in mind, the 2021 revenues included those one-time audit funds that we receive in sales taxes from the state. Excluding those one-time audit revenues, the general funds would be up about 3%. The OLOS fund is down 5.51%. Again, excluding those one-time audit revenues, the fund would actually be up about 10%. So doing good in terms of our sales tax collections still. The Stormwater Fund is up 3.61%. Stormwater, the Paving Fund, and the Medical Center Fund are all, all supported by property taxes, property taxes are up about 5% right now, so that's why you'll see those increases. The Paving Fund being up 3.53%, the Medical Center Fund being up 4.49%. The Integrated Waste Fund, on its face, is down right now, about 32%. That is largely attributable to the one-time capital equipment infusion that was made by the general fund last fiscal year, there was about $2.7 million that we transferred from the general fund to integrated waste to purchase equipment. Excluding that one-time infusion of, of cash into the fund, it would still be down about five, about 6%. Moving down the snapshot, the Emergency Telephone Fund is up 0.41%. The Economic Development Authority Fund is up 8.88%. Debt Service Fund, down 1.93%, that's due to the retirement of some of our GMA leases. The Transportation Fund is up seventy-two-point-two-five percent. Again, that's due to those grants that we've received from FTA in terms of the CARES money that we received for transportation. The Trade Center Fund is up seventy-point-one-nine percent. Again, this is due to operational revenue. They're holding more events at the Trade Center, and so they are receiving, seeing those increases. Also, in the budget for the Trade Center this particular fiscal year is the Revenue Recovery Money that was awarded to the Trade Center. That was about three-hundred-and-nine thousand that they received in support from the losses sustained from hotel-motel taxes. Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is down seventeen-point-three-eight percent. Oxbo Creek Golf Course up fourteen-point-seven-two percent. And the Civic Center Fund is up a whopping five-hundred-and-twelve percent. Right, that is also due to grants that they've received this fiscal year, as well as funding that they've received as revenue recovery related to the hotel-motel taxes. Moving down the right side of the snapshot to the Other Local Option Sales Tax Public Safety Summary, we've collected to date about fifteen-point-seven million in revenues. For the Public Safety Other Local Option Sales Tax Fund, we have about twenty-six-point-nine million in obligations. For the Other Local Option Sales Tax Fund Infrastructure Summary, we have about six-point-seven million that we've collected, recorded as revenue, with about nine million that we have in expenditures. Moving to the left side of the snapshot here, you'll see those General Fund departments that are highlighted. The goal was to be greater, at or greater than forty-two percent in terms of what's left to be spent in the budget. Right now, we do have some that are on the watch list, the litigation for the City Attorney's Office, the Information Technology, the annual fees for software lease and maintenance agreements, the Human Resources Department, that is due to the encumbrance of the pay study. You know, council approved up to three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand in the budget this year for that pay study, and so that's why they're on the watch list this month, is due to that encumbrance. The Employee Benefits is due to the annual death benefit and major disability payments that we make at the beginning of the fiscal year. I don't anticipate that that would be over as we end FY twenty-two. The Fire Department is on the watch list here. The Jury Manager is on the watch list. That's due to the jury summons and subscription fees. The, and lastly, the Public Defender's Office is on the watch list, and that's only relative to the contract that we pay out to the state. That contract is paid out monthly, but it's in advance. So for the beginning of the month, we pay for the next month, we pay for the next month. So that, in a nutshell, is the financial update. Overall, from a General Fund perspective, we're at about forty-seven percent left. We have about forty-seven percent left in the budget, and the goal is forty-two, so we're doing better than projected at this particular point from an overall perspective. And I'll take any questions if you have.
Any questions for the Finance Director? Doesn't appear to be any.
Thank you, Finance Director.
Yes.
My last update is on critical vacancies within the government. Our Finance Director, excuse me, HR Director, Rita Hollowell. Critical vacancies within the CCG.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, to the Mayor and Council. We talked about critical vacancies in CCG about, it's been almost two years ago since I've made a presentation, but I thought it would be a good time to talk again about the critical vacancies in the Columbus Consolidated Government, given the continued unprecedented, unprecedented times that we have. And this presentation is fairly short. We've talked about this, as I said, some time ago, and, but, so this would just be an update here. So when we look at critical vacancies, in terms of how we identify those, we look at positions that have been vacant for six months or longer, and it's a mix of things. We look at those positions that have been vacant for six months or longer, those positions that require, that are highly skilled positions, those positions that are hard to fill due to the specialized work area, and those positions that are required for the organization to function effectively. I do want to say this when I talk about critical vacancies, because this came, came back at me when we did the bonus, the ARP bonus. You know, some employees somehow or another did not think that they were critical. So I do want to make the point that all of our employees, and I think I say this from a council's perspective and from administration's perspective, all of our employees are critical. But these are critical vacancies that are very difficult to fill. It's difficult to recruit for these positions, it's difficult to retain in these positions. So all of our employees are critical, and do want to make sure that we're clear on that one. So in order to talk about our critical vacancies, I think it's very important also just to recognize what's going on in the nation as it relates to recruitment and retention. I'm sure that you all have heard of what's being dubbed as the Great Resignation. In twenty-twenty-one, a record number of Americans quit their jobs. And so it's not just in Columbus, but Columbus is feeling the effects of everything that's going on in the nation. While seventy-five million, just over seventy-five million workers were hired in twenty-twenty-one, of that seventy-five million, sixty-eight, almost sixty-nine million workers quit their job. They quit, and that forty-seven-point-four million of them voluntarily quit, meaning they, they left voluntarily for some reason or another. And there are many reasons why employees leave, there are many reasons why they quit. Some of the statistics say that they often leave for higher pay. They're leaving for a lack of adequate childcare, healthcare concerns as it relates to COVID, the pandemic that we've been in for the past couple of years. Employee burnout because they are overworked, feeling overworked, so they, they leave for employee burnout, better work opportunities. Some go for self-employment, and the list goes on and on. This is just a very short list of some of the reasons employees do leave. But I just think, as we talk about our critical vacancies here, it's important to recognize that Columbus is not exempt from what's happening in the rest of the world. So to begin with our public safety critical vacancies, I looked at our Police Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the Muskogee County Prison in particular. Of course, there's, we've got fire and EMS, but they are not in a critical state in terms of their vacancies, such as these departments that I've listed here. If you see the Police Department, if we look at the four-hundred-and-forty-four positions in the Police Department right now, of that four-hundred-and-forty-four positions, they do experience a hundred-and-thirty vacancies at this time, and they've been experiencing vacancies for a number of years. And I've got another slide that I'll share with you briefly on that. In the Sheriff's Office, they've got the Sheriff's Deputies and Corrections Officers, three-hundred-and-thirty-seven of those sworn positions. In terms of the Sheriff's Deputies, fifty-five are vacant, and then the Sheriff's Corrections Officer, fifteen are vacant there. And then at the Muskogee County Prison, of the hundred-and-fourteen sworn positions there, they do have seventeen vacancies there. Not only is public safety experiencing a critical shortage of employees to do the necessary work of this government, there are general government positions that are so very critical that we have a difficult time filling and retaining as well. So, and these are not by any means all of the vacancies throughout city government. These, again, are those that are very, very critical. They've been vacant and continue to be vacant for six months or longer. These are specialized-type positions, they are difficult to recruit and retain for. Looking at Metra, Metra with fifty bus operator positions, they're currently experiencing twenty-two vacancies in the Department of Metra Transit.
And I would just remind you that because of, they are so short, they are running, for more than a year now, they've been running Saturday bus schedules on weekdays because they are so short, just can't fill the positions.
Absolutely, I'm sorry, absolutely. And then with the Parks and Recreation Department, of the three-hundred-and-twenty-eight positions that they have, and this is a combination of their full-time positions and part-time, as you all know, Parks and Recreation uses a lot of part-time, temporary, seasonal employees. But of those three-hundred-and-twenty-eight positions that they have, a hundred-and-seventy-six of those positions are vacancies. So they have been hurt extremely in terms of the work that they are trying to do in Parks and Recreation, and I know they're bracing now, you know, thinking about when school is out, how do they manage their operations there with the number of current vacancies that they have? And the pandemic just was not kind to them at all. So they're still struggling trying to recruit and retain. And I have one more slide on them later in this brief presentation. And Public Works, we've talked a lot about Public Works, and they still have some critical vacancies there as they try to service the city, particularly from a sanitation standpoint. Waste Equipment Operators, they've got one-hundred-and-seventeen positions, and they've done a really good job at recruiting, but they still have twenty-five vacancies in that area. The Fleet Maintenance, that's the mechanic position. Of the twenty-eight mechanic positions, they've got ten vacancies there. And then these equipment operators, which are so desperately needed, there are seventy-one positions there. Thirteen of them are vacant. And then to our Engineering Department, and you've heard Donna Newman many a times come and talk about some of the challenges that they have, and specifically in their engineering area, this core area here, where they have eleven positions that are strictly engineer-related, four of those positions are vacant at this time. And these are specialized, highly skilled positions that, you know, in order to recruit, you've really got to pay top dollar in order to get people in these specialized areas. So we're continuing to be challenged in those areas. I do mention our Information and Technology Department because during the, when the pandemic hit, one of the key departments that everybody was calling was information technology, and needing technology to try to continue to manage. And they've got two critical positions there, and again, a lot of time it's very competitive to get technology folks because it's specialized, and they can ask for whatever the salary that they want typically. So they are very challenged there in terms of recruitment and retention. And this is just a slide that you may not be able to read this, but I just wanted to highlight Parks and Rec one more time in terms of the number of positions that they have, that three-hundred-and-twenty-eight positions. And of those three-hundred-and-twenty-eight, they are still experiencing a hundred-and-seventy-six positions. Again, this is a combination of their full-time and part-time positions. And while I say this about Parks and Rec and throughout general government, I don't know the exact number of career fairs that we participated, hosted, and attended in twenty-twenty-one, but we participated in a lot of career fairs, what we call hiring fairs. And that's what I told departments, when you go out to a career fair, you know, you want to talk to people, and hopefully you're going to recruit somebody, but at the same time, if you feel like they're qualified, we need to offer them a job, because if we don't offer them a job, somebody else is. So that's our mantra when we go out to these career fairs now. Our goal is, yes, to publicize and to promote Columbus Consolidated Government, but we're also committed to hiring on the spot, and we will, and we've hired a lot of people. We have hired a lot of people, but we've also lost a lot of people throughout this government. And so there was some discussion, I did want to mention this here, coming to my last couple of slides here, with regard to the Police Department in terms of looking at their turnover rate. Now, this, the Mayor's seen this number, so I know he's familiar with it, but council may not have seen some of these numbers. This is a look back at the Police Department from two thousand and nine in terms of their turnover rate. It looks at the number of persons hired, the number of persons retired, resigned, terminated, and deceased. And if you look there, you can go from two thousand and nine all the way through two thousand and twenty-one, and the pattern is consistent throughout the years. You know, if they hired, you know, they were able to hire more. If you look at in two thousand and nine, they hired a hundred-and-three. In two thousand and twenty-one, they hired thirty-seven. In two thousand and twenty, hired fifty. So we're hiring a lot of folks, but we also have turnover. If you see the number of folks retired.
I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hollowell, of the hundred-and-three that were hired in two thousand and nine, do you recall how many of those may have been funded by the OLOS?
It's a good question, but I do not know the answer, I don't know the answer to that.
Would it be probably a majority of them, or, no, I was, because that's, that's the first year, as I recall, that we had the OLOS fully operational.
It's a good question, and that, you're right, when we were committed to hiring the hundred police officers. So it could very well be, but I can research that and.
No, that's okay, I just, I just was curious, thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we look at the number of retired, this is a consistent pattern here. There's not anything major going on there in terms of the number resigned. You see, that's a consistent number. Obviously, we talked about the Great Resignation of twenty-twenty-one, and you see that reflected here, where there were seventy-four resignations in twenty-twenty-one. Thirty-seven were hired, it left a deficit of negative forty-seven. Very few, only a couple were terminated, and nobody deceased. But that's what the numbers look like in terms of turnover, and that's a twelve-year look back in terms of the Police Department. And we could do this overall for city government, while I don't have that number with me today, but we've just had unprecedented separations.
And I was gonna say, if you did the same chart for city government, twenty-twenty-one would look no different than it looks for the Police Department in Parks and Rec, and Metra, and all those other departments, because of the Great Resignation, because of the pandemic, because of the times. It's not just police, it's all over, our city government, it's in Macon, it's in Augusta, it's in Savannah, all over Georgia, all over the nation.
Absolutely, absolutely. These are, this is not, this is unfortunately, and these are, these are hard numbers to look at. It's hard numbers for us to look at for the Police Department, and it's hard numbers for the City of Columbus, and we're challenged. But, you know, just like other challenges that the city faced, we typically rise to the occasion, and I don't expect that we'll do anything less. But that's, that's information on turnover for the Police Department. And of course, you know, in terms of when we do our exit interviews, we know the things are typical in terms of why people leave, the recruitment challenges that we have, and the retention challenges. They are throughout the government, very, very similar. Competitive pay is what they're looking for, lack of qualified applicants in terms of recruitment, the type of work, not everybody wants to be a police officer, a firefighter, or drive a trash truck, not everybody wants to do that. So we are challenged in that. The benefits, which are benefits, are very comparative to other like agencies. We do well in terms of our benefits, but, you know, applicants always want more, and I get that. There are incentives, we continue to work toward incentives in public safety and general government, which is, you know, I'm really pleased about the pay and classification study that we've just launched, and working through all this week with our employee orientation session, focus groups, and meeting with departments. So this is a major step in the right direction, conducting this classification and compensation study, so I'm glad that we've gotten that underway. But you see there, our recruitment challenges and retention challenges, again, these are not unlike what other companies are experiencing today. Mr. City Manager, that concludes, and if I'll answer any questions, if there are others.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you, thank you for this presentation. Going, while you've been going over this, a couple things came to mind. On some of these specialized positions, like the engineers and things like that, we have engineering companies in town. Could we. we have engineering companies in town. Could we look into possibly contracting some of them or privatizing some of those and having them come in and fill some of those positions on a contract basis? And then also, with all of these critical, critical vacancies, I can't let it, I can't let it go past, is the, this has to be boosting our general funds. It has to be because we're not paying out, we're not paying out salaries. And so I just want us to be aware of that as we start, you know, we're, we're sitting here high on our horses right now with with a lot of general funds, and we're talking the big talk. But if we do go back and and we start filling these vacancies, we got to be really, really careful when you start turning that corner and go back to hiring.
I I would comment on on that. I appreciate, let me do the engineering one first. You know, and 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 I will tell you from an HR's perspective, we are open to every possibility of recruiting and hiring people. So whatever seems like it might work, we're willing to try it, including contracting out and doing just what you said. But I wanted to mention this because Pam Hodge shared with me a survey about engineers and how difficult it is to to hire engineers and how we, as the city of Columbus, compete for engineers. And if we look at Pratt and Whitney and some of these other places that are trying to get engineers as well, you think, let's say there's a need for twenty engineers, and you've got several companies in Columbus that is is looking for engineers too. So where does Columbus fall in terms of being able, city of Columbus, trying to reta- attract an engineer that Pratt and Whitney is trying to get, that two or three other engineering companies are trying to get, you know, and they've already got a hand foot, they've got a foot in Auburn where you get engineers from, mostly Auburn and Tuskegee. I think those are the two universities here that put out engineers, and they've already got, you know, a lock on that. So it's a challenge, but it's one that, you know, I'm open to and us trying to recruit engineers. But just, it it just highlights how challenging some of these very specialized positions are. And then to your last point about the 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 vacancies that we have, there's a cost to turnover. There's a high cost to turnover, even, and that's what we experience, even though, yes, we've got these vacancies here. But when we turn over, when we're not able, the the cost to train, to recruit, and and to train that person, and by the time we get them up and ready to actually be able to get, there's a, we've we've lost a lot of money, a lot of money by the time we recruit and we get them trained, and by the time they're really ready to be able to do the job that we hired them for. So we're paying one way or the other.
Councilor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, and just listen to the conversation. I I appreciate it. And I think we quite often hear the, kind of the, I guess, the presence of this conversation and and knowing that it's not only a local issue but a state issue, a national issue. It is what it is. I think we also understand that things are getting a little better in the marketplace and things are changing. You know, hopefully the the doors will start opening, we can fill some of those spots. But we talk a lot about the problem, the problem, but I'm more interested, Mr. City Manager, if if you would, maybe the next conversation we have, if we can talk about how we're trying to come up with solutions to to deal with some of these matters. I just heard the director say that she's willing to try, which leads me to say, well, you know, why have we not been trying before? We're not just learning these things. We we have known about this for a while. I had a conversation with one of the employees not long ago about engineers, and and I came to realize that some of these universities are having job fairs. You got all types of engineers out there, and certainly the competitive aspect, you can't, I mean, it's there. You you just can't deal with that. It is what it is. But, you know, I would ask the question, what are we doing? Are we, are we just posting jobs on sites or or are we going to the market? Are we getting a little more aggressive to go to the market? And then I would ask on top of that, what are we doing? Because you got a different jobs, you got different jobs up there, different responsibilities, tasks, et cetera. What are we doing with some of the other spots in training or maybe utilizing some of these areas that we've talked about for a long time? I know we we've discussed some of these programs in town, but how far are we reaching? I'd love to have those kind of conversations.
Sure.
I know, I mean, we know what the the problem is. I mean, it's, it's, like I said, a local, national, state matter that everybody's dealing with. So, you know, I would, i- if we have resources that we talk about, maybe utilizing them in such a way that that we can be a little more aggressive in going out to the market versus maybe, I I see a lot of job postings, but I don't know how many people are going through those all the time. I don't even know how many people know that we have jobs available here specifically. So maybe next time, if we could have that conversation more about what what are we doing and how are we trying to solve some of these problems that are being discussed here or being focused on, and how are we trying to move forward in the future in filling some of these vacancies? And I I know there's some carry, we know there's some carryovers in the budget, but there's also some bright spots too as well that that our city's doing well financially. So, you know, you you ask yourself the question, do we utilize some of those resources to to deal with some of these problems? And then on top of that, we've got specific areas that we provide services, key services. I mean, some would argue that all the services are are key, but I would say that there are some that the citizens look at that are, well, it's just, it tends to be a little more, you know, on the radar screen on a daily basis. And and what are we doing to address those aggressively?
Sure.
So to speak. And and maybe we can get ahead of this curve. You know, I don't know what the other cities and all are doing, but we know they struggle too, and they have some of the same problems. But, you know, we got to figure out how do we get ahead of this thing and keep moving forward. But I I just, I feel personally, I feel like there's opportunities out there, there's things that we could be doing. And so I'd just like to hear, I'd like to hear what what we're doing and what we can do to to provide solutions to some of these concerns that's being projected before us.
Well, certainly, and the HR director will make note of that, and and we will be happy to come back and share some of the things we are doing, she's doing, and they are, they're doing a lot. And 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 Counselor, I I know that you know that when it comes down to it, it it comes down to money. It comes down to pay, you know. I see some of, you know, in 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 some of the areas we advertise, they advertise all of the same positions in a category. And when you look at the same position in those various categories, and you look at what the starting pay is, you know, I mean, we're, we're last on the list that they're going to even file an application with. And I think the pay study is, it should help us in that regard, but 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 pay is a challenge in those positions. But we will come back and share some of that with you. And I think, just to be clear, I think what I heard the HR director say when Counselor Crabbe was talking, we're open to any, you bring something to us, we want to, you know, we're open to your, any ideas that we'll, I was just talking last week about actually contracting with an employment agency, and, yeah, so that we can not just do it internally, we can do it simultaneously internally with an outside employment agency. And they may have, you know, a reach or an avenue, some pockets that we don't have, but we talked about that just last week.
Well, I, look, I, I know all of our respective responsibilities in in the different branches of government, but as I've said before, I think there's some areas, services that are are to be provided and expected by the citizens. I'm willing to make the necessary changes and approving the resources to to move forward in those areas if it deals with competitive, if it's a competitive pay issue. You know, it's another thing if it's a training issue, but we've talked about job programs for a long, long time. There's got to be people out there that are hungry, willing to work, if we just got them in the right direction. There's people out there, we just got to, we got to figure it out. So I, I mean, we got the resources, and I'm willing to to do my part to move forward there, whatever it takes. But, you know, it it, when I see that, it kind of, you know, it strikes a little, makes you a little nervous, but you you have to, you have to realize it's, it's, it is what it is. And, you know, what are we doing to to address it from a solution standpoint? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you. Counselor Tucker? I'm sorry, Counselor Thomas?
Ms. Hollowell, I had a question the other day from someone who said, you remember that the governor had said we're going to give a thousand dollars to, was it public safety or just police officers?
First responders.
Yes.
First responders. And he said some municipalities have already gotten that money and paid it out, and some have not. And he asked me if we had done that, if we had paid it out. And I told him I didn't know, but we'd find out.
Well, I'm glad you asked the question because I get calls all the time about it. We first made our submission of those eligible public safety officers back in November, November 2021. And we are still waiting on a response from the governor's office to release those funds. Now, I see the finance director here, and she 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 gets the tab every day and passes on to me. I don't know if she's got any new information, but we are waiting on the governor's office to release the funds to us. Soon as they release the funds to us, then we can pay that thousand dollars to those eligible public safety officers. Do you have anything, guys?
It is just as the HR director mentioned, we are still waiting from the governor's office on, to receive all the funds. They did recommend that we submit each agency individually, just in case there was a hiccup in one agency, it didn't hold up the whole thing. So I am proud to say we're about ninety percent complete in terms of of us receiving all the funding. There's only two agencies that they are still, that are still under review.
There are two agencies that?
That are still, that's that's still under review with the governor's office. So as soon as we receive those two, I'm hoping by the end of February, we will have a response from them on those last two agencies.
And once we get that, then that will go citywide, I'm assuming?
Yes, 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 ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Tucker?
I wanted to respond to Counselor Davis in reference to retention and and also attracting new employees. While I was in DC at the National Association of Counties, I actually sit on the Human Services and Education Committee, and we draft policy that will go up to be basically approved at the federal level. And what we are working on right now, because like you said, this is happening on a national level, but we're working on, basically, the federal government to help counties attract college graduates to government service. And what the proposal is, is for the public service loan forgiveness program. You know, now you have to actually put ten years in in order to get that thirty-five thousand dollars. What we submitted while I was up in DC was to bring it down to three years. So if you had an employee actually here and to attract a college graduate with a student loan, and a lot of them probably have seventy-plus thousand, you know, dollars in student loan debt. So what this would do at three years, we're requesting that the federal government basically freezes the, their student loan, so they would not pay any student loan at that time. Even, I know some people do the forgiveness program, but, not forgiveness, but basically freezing. But you would not incur any additional interest or anything. It'd be frozen for three years. As long as you stay with the government, at that ten-year period, you will get the thirty-five thousand dollars forgiven. So at three years, you wouldn't even, you will only pay your student loan for three years. So this is something that, you know, we're working on. I actually met with Senator Alsoff. I was the one that had to set up that meeting with all the Georgia elected officials. And this is something that we're proposing, that one of the senators actually pick up because we know throughout the over thirty thousand counties nationally, we know that we're having a hard time attracting and retaining talent. So I'm hoping, I'm I'm really pushing this, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to get this approved.
That will be a strong recruitment tool, if you can get that. Very good, thank you.
I think that's all the questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda.
All right, we'll move to the clerks' agenda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counsel. For the clerks' agenda, I have one item of information. This is a letter from the chairperson, Audrey Tillman, submitting the recommendations from the 2021 Charter Review Commission. Item number two is a travel authorization request for Counselor Huff to attend the 2022 ACCG's annual conference.
Motion approved from Mayor Protem, Second Counselor House. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion to minutes be received. Mayor Protem, Second Counselor House, on number two? Okay, Counselor, Counselor Thomas, the motion?
Counselor Tucker has been attending a good many of these conferences across, well, from DC to Columbus. And there's this one that we've just approved, Counselor Huff to go. And I would like to have us do whatever we need to do to move money into the training account so that Counselor Tucker may also attend this meeting. But I think we're talking about maybe two thousand dollars. Can I, can I do that?
I don't, no, I don't see why not. So we'll take, take that as.
He's saying yes, so.
All right.
So I would, I would move that we allot two thousand dollars for Counselor Tucker to attend this conference also. Also.
Mr. Mayor, I would just suggest three.
Yes, Counselor Crabbe?
So in that fund, that training fund, is it, is it set aside, like, there's a thousand per, per counselor or something like that? How does it, how does it work?
Counselor Crabbe, we basically expand the monies from the travel account based on kind of first come, first served. Whenever a member of council comes to our office to let us know that they are interested in attending, then we would review the budget and then request authorization. But we don't allot, allot so much for each council member.
So have we used that up?
Yes, ma'am.
So you, so we don't allot per council member?
No, ma'am.
Okay, because I was going to say, I turned mine over in, back into the account, but that's not how it works.
We, we used to, there was a time when the counselors would anticipate the trips coming up that year and budget, put a budget request in through the clerk's office for those, those actual trips. We may go back to that maybe in the in the budget session. It seems a little cleaner way to do it instead of just, I guess, just first come, first served stuff. But so so that line item though is empty.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That line item is empty.
It's gonna be. It's gonna be, once we take care of Counselor Huff, where there is enough available for him. But once we take care of that, that line item will be depleted.
But there's other money in his council budget, right?
No, ma'am, that is going to also possibly cause an overage of the council's travel, of the council's total budget.
No, ma'am, that is gonna also possibly cause an overage of the council's travel, of the council's total budget. Unless that three thousand dollars is added to the budget.
There's been a little more travel this year coming out of the pandemic and I think we've just had more people attending these things.
Right, and then ACCG had two conferences. They had one at the end of November and now they're gonna have one again in April. And so that basically caused part of the situation because they've never had two conferences within one fiscal year for us. With their annual conference.
What's the pleasure of council?
And well, can we get Angelica back up here to kind of give us where it might, where it might come from?
Well, according to the ordinance that we passed, the resolution, I guess, we passed, when if we're running short of funds, we have to have a presentation on what the funds are for. And we should probably, instead of doing it one by one, take a look if there's any other events that council is planning on attending. We should probably put all those together in one request and then see what the pleasure of the rest of council is.
Because I'm wondering if it could come out of ARP money because Toya has been going to a lot of, of meetings about ARP and she has kind of become our little expert on it.
Well, there's a motion, did we get a second?
I, I didn't hear a second.
There's a motion from Counselor Thomas, I didn't know if there was a second.
I'm sorry. I want to hear what Angelica says.
I heard my name.
This is for, and this is?
I mean, are we stepping out of, are we, are we allowed to do this or are we stepping out of protocol?
I hear from the finance director.
Okay.
I heard my name and specifically I heard the discussion about the travel budget. And right now, the council has about eight thousand left in the travel budget. But that, but now that could, I'm not sure what may be coming. I mean, as of the end of January right now, that's, that's what's left in those two line items between the registration and?
Can we just verify that? Because there may be some encumbered dollars that you don't know about, that she knows about. And because she monitors the bud, her budget and it's a very small budget, so I'm sure you know what you're talking about. And so I would ask that we check and verify.
Yes, I mean, we can come back.
But, but I will say, as you heard, Judge Stephen Smith appeared tonight for four thousand dollars. Because, what's that ordinance number?
Thirteen dash thirty-nine.
Thirteen dash thirty-nine, that's why he came for four thousand dollars. So every department has to come before this council if they are going to exceed their budget. And so it's, it's just a matter of whether you want to follow that same process.
And I agree, we can come back with the other.
I would, I would come back so you can get a formal vote on everybody that needs the particular piece of travel. And then you're consistent with your ordinance, you got a recommendation from either finance or the mayor. The council is a department in this case, but you know, I would just do that, try to package it all and come back with one vote.
When is this conference?
I concur with the city attorney because if you do two thousand tonight and then next month you come back and you do three thousand, you're gonna keep coming back.
That was, that was my point, okay.
Okay.
Well, we'll let?
And I, and then I do know that registration is tomorrow.
All right.
Registration is tomorrow.
And so, yeah, that's why we were bringing it up tonight because registration is tomorrow. If we come, if we bring it back to this body, it'll be too late.
Well, what's the registration? I think you could cer, you could certainly approve that tonight and then hold off on the other until your next meeting.
I'm sorry, approve what tonight?
Registration for, I think, Counselor Tucker.
How much is the registration fee?
Is, if she takes any classes, it's going to be upwards of eight hundred twenty-five dollars. If it's two, if it's two classes, it's going to be more. Okay, that should be about six hundred fifty dollars.
All right, well, there's a motion on the floor, no second. Counselor Davis, is this a motion? I guess it is.
Well, we're having this conversation, I, I, I'm just gonna tell you, I'm real sensitive to this issue based on, based on past history. I agree with the city manager and city attorney. I think when we budget something, when we budget line items like this out of the council, I think we need to stick to it. If we need to make adjustments, we make them in the, in the future. But making amendments, I think when we started out, this all started out from a standpoint of training and, and some of the required responsibilities that council, new council members are, are required to do. So I, I, I'm a little sensitive to this issue because I've been through it in the past and, and I, I just think we ought to stick to the guidelines just as any other department or any other. We need to set the, we need to set example leadership. And I, I think that's the appropriate, I just think that's the appropriate thing to do.
All right, thank you, sir. Counselor Tucker?
I was gonna say, normally I don't speak for myself when it comes to this. But this training, I'm actually the only certified elected official up here on council. I've taken sixty-six hours through Carl Benson Institute and received my certification back in November. And that's the only reason why I went in November, because of me being awarded that certification. And sadly, the reason why the training was in November was because of COVID. So normally it's in April every year, but they moved it to November. So that is the only reason why myself and Bruce was there in November was due to COVID changing the April schedule to November. So normally we wouldn't even be here and it won't happen, you know, again. But unfortunately, because of the pandemic, this is what happened with ACCG.
All right.
Oh, and also, in order for me to maintain my certified elected official status, with you all spending all that money to send me for those sixty-six hours through UGA, I have to attend this or I lose my certification.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe?
I have a, I have an idea. What if, would you be in a position where you could pay for it yourself? We go through the process and, and follow the protocol? And then we approve it and then you, we could reimburse after the fact? Is that, is that doable? Or is that something that we would even want to consider doing or?
Well, I mean, to me, you're talking about six hundred dollars at this point. We've got a motion, if it dies for lack of a second?
So, Mr. Mayor, the motion is to approve six hundred dollars? The six hundred dollars just for the registration?
I think that's what I heard from Counselor Thomas. Just, just for Tucker, huh?
For Counselor Tucker.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, I want, I want us to do what, whatever we can to get Counselor Tucker registered tomorrow. And that's a six hundred dollar registration. And then we can come back and the, the conference is in April. We can come back at our next meeting and take care of the other items that may need to be taken care of or take up a collection, one of the others.
I second that. I second that.
You second it? All right, there's a motion and a second, second from Counselor Crabbe to, yes, sir.
Why don't you just let me handle it this time until you all figure it out? Because, you know, I mean, to Counselor Davis's point, the department heads are watching. And this is the governing body. And they don't need to watch you do something you won't let them do. So I, I'll take care of it.
Agreed.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, appreciate that. I withdraw my motion.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, we did have a motion and second on item number three, which are the minutes.
For the minutes, okay. All in favor of receiving the minutes, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're approved.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did want to have an add-on resolution to excuse Counsel Barnes from today's meeting.
Motion and a second to approve a resolution excusing Counsel Barnes. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right.
Next, we have board appointments. First, we have the mayor's appointments.
Well, I'll nominate, I know Counsel Garrett's recommended Ben Link. So I want to go ahead and place him in nomination for the citizens advisory.
Okay, so we first had Circle and now we have the Community Development Advisory Council. And so, Mr. Mayor, you were wanting to nominate Mr. Ben Link?
Right.
Okay. He may be confirmed.
Motion second to confirm, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Then you have one other seat, Mr. Mayor.
And I think I'll have, I'll have that one for you. I'm still working on one from Circle, but I'll have one for Community Development Advisory Council again in two weeks.
Okay. And then we also have a seat available on the Crime Prevention Board. Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. We have the Historic and Architectural Review Board. Mr. Tony Johnson was nominated at the last meeting. He may be confirmed.
Okay, Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I have a seat on Community Develop Advisory Board, don't I, that's open?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm, I'm working on that and I'll get you a name.
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
All right, there's a motion to confirm, is there a second? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
Next, we have council district seat appointments for the Civic Center Advisory Board. We have District Two and District Three for the Community Development Advisory Council. Counsel Crabbe is working on her nominee. We also have District Six and District One. For the District Eight seat, Counsel Garrett is nominating Cal Albright to succeed John, just?
Motion second to confirm, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's approved.
Next, for the Recreation Advisory Board, we have Districts One and Three. Item seven, these are council appointments, any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Animal Control Advisory Board has one seat that is open for nominations. For the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison Encounters, there are three seats that are open for nomination. For the Development Authority, we have the seat of Russ Kariker. He has recently passed away and this seat is open for nomination. For the Historic and Architectural Review Board, we have the Historic District Preservation Society seat as well as the Columbus Home Builders Association seat that are open for nominations. For the Personnel Review Board, we have the seat, two alternate seats, the seat of Darlene Small and Dr. Shanita Pettaway that are open for nominations. For the Planning Advisory Commission, Counsel Barnes is nominating Dr. Xavier McCaskey to serve another term of office. And we will have this listed for the next meeting for confirmation. We have upcoming board appointments for the Animal Control Advisory Board, Development Authority of Columbus, Employee Benefits Committee, and the Housing Authority of Columbus. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. And we've got an executive schedule, an executive session scheduled. We have, I know Lieutenant Dowd wanted to come back for his three more minutes. And Ms. Elamine has showed up, so she'll go after Lieutenant Dowd for history. Lieutenant, you want to come forward? I'm sorry. Counselor Davis?
We can go back, I'd like to nominate Mr. Charles Sheffield for the Development Authority.
All right, there's a, there's a nomination of Mr. Sheffield for the Development Authority.
Mr. Mayor, we'll bring this back for the next meeting for confirmation.
Mayor, if I may, Madam Clerk, is there an opening on the Historic and Architectural Review Board?
Yes, sir, for the two slated seats. I believe it was the Historic Preservation, Historic District Preservation Society and the Columbus Home Builders Association.
Mr. Bray is not eligible to succeed, correct?
That's correct.
I'd, I'd like to nominate Mr. Jack Hayes.
Jack Hayes, H-A-Y-E-S. Okay, well, we will bring this back as well for the next meeting for confirmation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Ms. Dowd.
Thank you, Counselor Davis.
Apologize for making you wait.
Thank you.
Sure.
You'll have three minutes.
I welcome the three minutes and the chance to respond a little bit. The city manager pointed out that he was offended by the actions of the FOP. And I must say that I've, I've been offended by the attack on the FOP by the mayor and the city manager. We've spent more time in the last ten minutes talking about a training class for somebody to attend than was afforded to the body of the FOP. We're speaking on a matter of public safety, this was turned into a personal attack on me. The mayor, you and I have spoken in the past, you've been very well aware, briefed on some of the issues within the police department, and you have chosen not to act on those. So the body of the FOP has been silenced. We've brought these issues forth, nobody's acted on them, we've been silenced. So the only option we see is to come into a public forum. Some of the numbers you presented on, Ms. Hollowell presented a while ago, she pointed up the numbers of the Sheriff's Department. You do the quick math on that, they're down about fifteen percent of their capacity. We're down thirty-five point five percent from our capacity. In two thousand eight, the voters entrusted you with a OLOS tax. In that, you provided that you were going to give them an additional one hundred officers. That was two point seven one officers per one thousand residents for four hundred and eighty-eight. You haven't lived up to that. We've deleted twenty now and converted them to cadet positions. The chief wants to refer to twenty-four as being unfunded. They were unfunded in two thousand eighteen, but at that time, the budget letter that came with the budget said if the department head is able to hire these people, we absolutely have the money and we will pay them. This was just a, a bookkeeping error on the money. So those positions haven't been deleted. When that four eighty-eight was established, the city was a hundred and eighty thousand people. The city is currently two hundred and six thousand people, according to the latest census. So if you do the math using two point seven one officers per thousand, which is what we were promised, the department shouldn't be four eighty-eight or the four forty-four that the chief now claims it is. It should be about five hundred and fifty-eight or so. If you use the statewide number of officers per one thousand, it's two point five six. Using that number, we should be staffed at about five hundred and fifteen. Departments nationally, yes, there's been a, a reduction in staffing in departments. But according to the law enforcement executive research form, departments nationwide are staffed at ninety-three percent capacity. The city of Lagrange is about ninety percent capacity. Peachtree City is ninety-eight percent capacity. So we're, we're different, we're in a different ballgame than those other cities. What's happening here is not happening all around the country. You know, we're losing officers to the Sheriff's Department. So this isn't a black-white issue like the city manager tried to make it out to be. One of my best friends in the world was Dean Walton, who was a black officer that I worked with. I have plenty of black officer friends. We have black officers in the department, thirty percent of the department is people of color. And that's adequately reflected in our survey conducted by the FOP. They voted consistent with the rest of the FOP. So it's not about that. We should not be focused on race and trying to distract from the issues at hand. We should be focused on what's best for the officers in this city and the citizens that we serve. And we're not providing a safe environment for them today.
Thank you, Lieutenant Dowd. And I, and just to be clear, I wasn't attacking the FOP. Just to be clear, my exception was made with the process. And, and I know you've said I've had communications with you, you and I have had, I did get the information. What I was hoping for was an opportunity, which I anticipated based on previous interaction, was an opportunity to sit down with representatives from the FOP and go over that, that material that was provided. We did go through a little bit cursory and I'm not, we don't want to get into give and take. But, but that's what, that's what I took exception with, was, was with the process. And the process to me just didn't seem like it flowed the way it should have if we were really looking to try to solve some of those problems.
And I was told coming in here today that this was going to be a personal attack on me to try to make it about me to discredit what you're saying.
This is not, I'm not attacking you personally. I've told you.
Y'all addressed a personnel- You only addressed a personnel matter in this open forum. That, that is completely uncalled for. Nobody at this table can produce a lawsuit with my name on it. You alleged that I filed a lawsuit. I haven't.
No, I said a legal, you do have a legal claim against the individual.
I filed an EOC complaint.
It's a legal claim. And that's, I apologize, I can't.
You're distracting from the issue at hand. We owe our citizens a safe city. They're paying taxes. They demand a safe city. You haven't lived up to, to the O-Laws that you promised. And that's where we're at. So our voices are being stifled. So the only way we can do this is to go public and speak to the people that may listen to this.
Well, you and I disagree on the process that you used. And that's, I'm sorry, your three minutes are, are up, actually, by a couple of minutes, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ms. Teresa Elamine?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I stopped by the school board meeting. It started at six, oh, I'm sorry. Teresa Elamine, thirty-nine eleven Steam Mill Road. When I stopped by the school board meeting, they normally put their public agenda first. But today, the most amazing awards, the youngest, most enthusiastic new teachers I've seen, they looked like they were students. They were so young. So there was a lot of awards, and I miscalculated. I thought the city attorney's agenda would take a little longer. So thank you. What I want to say, Mr. Davis, is that this planning department is doing an amazing job. I have never seen such rapid growth and construction. When I was driving back from North Carolina and when I got in Columbus, how well paved one eighty-five is, as I moved towards Buena Vista. I laughed till I cried about that roundabout at Conceit Road. I thought that was the biggest joke. I really love it. It took me a while to figure it out, but it works. But Mr. Davis, when I lived in Boston, there was something called the Big Dig. They started the planning in nineteen eighty-two. Mr. Davis, listen to me, because this is for you, because Mr. Davis complained about the planning department projects taking so long. Nineteen eighty-two, they started planning that Central Artery Tunnel in Boston. I love my union sisters and brothers, but they did a number on us. It is the most costliest construction project, fourteen point eight billion. From nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and seven, I watched that big dig when I lived there in the nineties. It was an awful situation. So I told Mr. Johnson in January to tell Mr. Jones what a great job they're doing. And I just wanted to get that in tonight because the finance department, I talked to Jennifer Woodard today, another great thing going on. So Mr. City Manager, lots of good stuff going on with the staff. But that planning department is amazing. But I want to ask them about the Big Dig that's going on on Buena Vista between South and North ramps. It's a real big dig. So I'll call Mr. Jones and find out more about that. But I've lived a lot of places. I've never seen such rapid construction completed in short periods of time. The planning department rocks, really.
Thank you, Ms. Elamine. Thank you, ma'am. All right. To discuss personnel and potential litigation? Okay. There's a motion second to go into executive session, discuss personnel. If, all in favor, say aye. End litigation. I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye. All right, we are in executive session. All right, we have been in executive session. We, we discussed personnel and potential litigation. No votes were taken. There is a motion from Counselor Thomas and a second from Counselor Tucker to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we adjourn.